Stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Amadura has COVID. He couldn't make it. I have no idea where the other board member is, but we have a quorum, so we'll get started. Superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. I would like to start off with, we have two AOK awards. So I'm gonna read, I got two lovely emails from, one from a staff member and another email from a former student. But the first AOK award is gonna go to Paul Foster. So yay! So, the email came from one of our staff members that says, "It's been five years since I last came in to put together my classroom for the start of the new school year, and as then I am compelled to give a shout out to Paul Foster." "Paul does a meticulous job daily throughout the school year. He takes such good care of us. This shout out, however, is because of the summer classroom cleaning, floors, etc. Did you know Paul takes pictures of each classroom prior to cleaning? Did you know that when he is done, he then returns the furniture and the layout to exactly what it was before?" So the teachers love you. So, thank you, Paul.
Come on, Alice. Don't rush, we got time.
So, the second AOK award goes to Ms. Jennifer Anderson. So, this is actually from the summer that we have Eric Lynch, he is a current principal over in Spackenkill, but he was a student in Eldred at GRM from 5th grade through 8th grade. I think he was one of the first classes when the building opened. He camps out during the summer, so he has now three little boys. So, they asked to come see his school, so he came to see the school. And then he sent me this lovely email and about, he says, you know, he says, "I currently work in an elementary school in Spackenkill, and I know, despite what some may think, that there is work to be done in schools even the summer. That made it even more impressive to me that Ms. Anderson invited us in, asked us questions, told me about my old teachers, showed us the new playground, and even let my kids and I walk through Ms. Hazen's classroom for the first time in almost 30 years. She didn't have to do that, but she did." She goes, and he goes on to say, "The relationships that I formed and role models that I had while in Eldred helped to shape the person that I am today. I am thankful for those people from my past. I am just as excited to see that Ms. Anderson is representing the district the same way that I remember it 27 years ago as a new student who didn't know anyone. People don't typically take the time to catch us doing good in our profession, and each of you deserve the positive feedback, as I am sure I am, just one positive story out of thousands." So, it was a lovely email. So, congratulations, kid.
So, with that being done, if you'd like to stay here and be bored and listen to us, that's fine. And we won't be insulted if you get up and leave. You guys do whatever you want to do.
They have dinner reservations.
I'm giving them the option. Have a good night.
So, I just want to put on everybody's calendar, we are doing our early dismissal drill in each building on October 7th. Each building will be released 15 minutes early for this drill. So, we have to do that for the state. Our superintendent's conference day was on the 1st. I think it was great. I think the staff was engaged and they got time to work in their classrooms. We had the sheriff department, a big thank you to Deputy Barrett for coming out and going through safety protocols, answering questions from our staff members in regards to security, safety, and I think that helped. We did have mental health awareness. Thank you to Liz Reagan and Vanessa McWilliams for their mental health presentation to the staff. And, security update, we are still looking at, we're seeking a COPS grant. JED is working on that. It's a school violence prevention program. This grant is up to $500,000 towards the upgrade of our overall building security. We are taking a holistic approach. We're including law enforcement partners, mental health professionals, community members. So, we are at the very beginning stages of that. Like I said in the last meeting, we did have Homeland Security come in and do a security assessment. The building principals have that. We've looked at our district and school building safety plans, our response plans, and so we are working towards getting that COPS grant. Technology update, we have a new wireless system, 14 months later after ordering it. It's up, it's running. Chromebooks have been deployed for the junior, senior high school. Chromebook carts are up and running at the elementary school. The pre-kers through 2nd grade, they actually use Clever, and because again, as little kids, they can't log into Chromebooks. So, we actually have QR codes, so they show it to the camera on the Chromebook, and it logs it in for them. So, it's really perfect for our primary learners. Now, 3rd grade through 12th grade, they have to create, and they have created their own passwords, because again, we have in the past used their student IDs, which we can no longer do. Again, for data privacy, for EdLock 2D, all of our technology, they can't do that anymore. So, and I do really want to say thank you to JED and Lisa for their work on the Know Before platform. The Know Before platform is basically for security, computer training, and but, we were, they figured out, thank you very much, how to upload all of our compliance videos that we need to do for the state, also documentation, including our district handbook, and sexual harassment, that has to go, those are mandatory. So, the great thing is, you know, that is done. It's all in one place. We have the records for that. So, I do thank Lisa and JED, because that was a lot of work, and we rolled that out. So, teachers have access to that and have to have that completed by September 30th. I do want to give a bond project update, but I'm actually gonna have, it's gonna be Caleb and Dr. Morgano. I think we're having some technical issues on getting Dr. Morgano up. So, just bear with us for a moment. But that concludes my report.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions from the board? Okay, we're good. We'll wait to see what's up. Kristen is on her way, by the way.
Kristen's right here. Oh, Kristen's here.
Oh, she's right there. Sorry, she's here.
Hello, Dr. Morgano.
Hello.
Sound is working great now.
All right, so Caleb and Dr. Morgano, you're up to talk about the bond, and then you can go into your normal report or whatever, okay?
Yep.
Well, Caleb, you want to start, you want me to start?
Uh, you can start.
Everything is going as planned for the bond. We looked at the schedule today of events, and we're on track. So, that's good news. As you know, trying to coordinate the engineers with the public relations people, with the engineer, with the architects, it's like a symphony. When they all play together, it sounds great. When they don't, it doesn't. But we should be ready for the vote in December. Caleb, what challenges are we facing right now?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What challenges are we facing right now?
So, right now, we just had the boreings, the test boreings done. That was done last week. So far, preliminarily, everything looks good. They didn't find any, any kind of issues in terms of what was believed. They said there was a little bit of fill, but it wasn't organic matter. They said they didn't see any reason to dig down. They went down 15 feet, and they said the material that's down 15 feet is about the same as the material that's at 5 feet. So, they saw no reason to do anything with that. We're gonna have the public hearing coming up. The biggest challenge right now is pegging down a number for the facilities. So, they just did the survey as well. They're doing that today. Once they do the survey and the boring, they can give us a much more accurate picture about what the cost of the track is gonna be. Now, that's not gonna change the size of the bond. Size of the bond is the size of the bond. It's gonna be tax neutral. It's just gonna change how much else we can fit into the bond. Right now, it's budgeted at a pretty high number. So, I'm expecting that to come down. So, the next month, what you're gonna see here, and I did a little list here for the board, and it's gonna be up there on the public. The first two pages are what we've done already. And when we completed it, the third page, it's gonna say bond project a month ahead. That's what we need to do. So, the public hearing on September 29th, we're gonna unveil the project to the public. We've already got the initial draft of the secret determination. And we're getting renderings done. So, we saw renderings of the track today, which we will eventually make public. We saw renderings of the two media centers. So, we're already pretty far ahead in that area. By October 6th, we need to have a secret determination. Now, today, you're gonna accept lead agency. So, as lead agent, we're the ones that make a determination. And if they don't like the determination, they can oppose it. But as lead agent, we make a determination on what environmental things need to be done. It's gonna be an architect, of course, and engineer, not ourselves. On October 6th, we're gonna have to finalize the amount of the bond referendum. I'm expecting that to be about $13 million and $45,000. That's 12 million, so the 12 you hear from me talking all the time, 12 is the amount financed. And then up to $1 million in reserve funds. That doesn't mean we're gonna spend $1 million. It's just the most that we've discussed putting in. So, it'd be right around $13 million and 45. On October 13th, the board will have to take an action. So, you'll accept our secret determination that we come up with. You'll set the date for a special vote, which we've told everybody is December 6th. We're still on target for December 6th. And we will make the bond resolution. So, just like you would do a budget vote, you're gonna create a resolution that says, you know, the voters authorize the Eldred Central School District to expend amounts up to $13 million and $45,000 and take debt of up to, 12 million, I believe, is the number that our bond guy gave us. That would be tax neutral. And that's our next month. And then behind that, and this is still good, you'll see, it says draft on it, but this is the timeline of events after that, beyond that. And these are good right now. We're still on target for all of these. So, you'll see, like, 10, 14, we need to mail certified copies of what you approve on the 13th to the bond council. November 22nd, you're gonna have small group information sessions, public information sessions, send newspaper affidavits on 11/29. This timeline is good. So, if anybody wanted to follow along, that's what we do. I'd say the challenge right now is pegging down a final cost for the track and field, because that's the biggest portion of the bond financially.
We saved a lot of money by restructuring the fieldhouse. Instead of $1.5 million for the fieldhouse, we put in around, what, about $400,000, we figured?
Yeah, and we've also saved some money, as it turns out, on the bleachers. We don't know exactly how much yet, but it's not gonna be 1.1 million.
They had to do the boring yet before they could come up with any kind of number.
Right, that was the biggest issue. We're gonna need to replace that retaining wall, which I think we all already knew.
But track?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. What a track's fault.
That's exactly what they said.
We don't want to lose a business official from a neighboring school district.
So, Dr. Morgano?
Yes, sir.
In the opening day, or the, last Thursday, Tracy had some dates that you wanted to sit in the town halls, from like 1 to 4 or something like that?
Yeah, it was October 15th and possibly November 12th.
Now, what is your, what are you, what's your reasoning for that?
To be available, to answer questions that people don't want to come to a board meeting and ask.
Okay, now.
It could be a mundane question, or it could be a substantive question. And whatever it is, it's just, like, to have access to the superintendent and the board member to ask questions.
So, we're gonna have a public hearing?
The 29th.
Huh?
29th.
29th. So, would it be more effective if I were to get ahold of the senior citizens' buildings as we did in the past? Because it definitely was not effective, you and I looking at one another in the Mackenzie Library for six hours.
No, we bonded.
Huh?
We bonded.
Yeah, we were bonding, all right. Well, we were bonding there, but this is a bond here.
Yes, that's a good idea.
I'll be avail, I mean, I could do, I, whatever you want to do, I just, I think more effectively, I think we really hit home when we used to go to the senior citizens' meetings. We did the one in Lumberlin, we did the one up here at Town Island. And, I mean, we had a lot of questions asked there, right? I mean, that was, that was productive. Our Saturday afternoon morning meetings were not productive.
Let's go with your suggestion.
I mean, it's up to you. We can do both. I mean, you know.
Would it make sense to go to like one of their board meetings or something like that, if they would have us?
Well, what, to a town board meeting?
Yeah.
We've had this school, when I sat on the town board, we had actually a superintendent, and I believe it was one of your positions, come to our town board meeting, explain some stuff. I could set that up too, if you want. I mean, we, they're, they're the second Tuesday, and I think they're the second Wednesday of the month in Lumberlin, and second Tuesday down here. Whatever you guys think's gonna be more effective, but we sat there on Saturdays. I did, we did it twice, and nobody showed up, except for one news report.
Now, are the senior citizens, are they meeting?
I don't know. See, I'd have to look into that. I don't know since COVID if they're meeting or not. I don't know. What's your guys' take on it? Seriously? I don't know, I don't even know if the senior citizens are, is your mother a part of senior citizens, Nancy? No? Because I don't even know if they're meeting. Since COVID, during COVID, they weren't meeting, and I don't know if they ever got back to meeting. But I was supposed to look into that, and I dropped the ball. I'm sorry. I'll do it next week. I will.
But I think then, but I do like the idea of going to the town board meetings.
That's fine. I could, I could talk to. Okay, so, you as superintendent, you want me as a president to reach out to the two supervisors and see if we can, see if we can come to their meeting and get on their agenda?
If you can, if you can reach out to them.
I have both of the numbers in my, on my phone.
That'd be perfect.
So, we'll do that, Dr. Morgano.
All right.
And then, and then I'll see, I'll see what the seniors are doing, and then we can arrange to get on your agenda. If they are meeting, we can go to the senior buildings. Caleb?
Yep.
Yourself and myself and Tracy, we can go up and talk to them.
Because the more information that gets out, the more misinformation there will be.
Right.
We have to be there to check it constantly. So, the senior center is great. The only potential issue is COVID.
Yeah.
Let's reach out to them.
All right, I'll work on that next week. I'll see if I can arrange all that.
Awesome, thank you.
All right. Anything else?
I'm just running past the different expenditures. We had pictures today, don't we, didn't we take pictures of the roof all flooded today?
We did.
Yes, we did. And Jim Dorcas sent those to me, so we do have pictures of where the roof, we did have a couple of small leaks from the past lovely rainstorm. So, I do have pictures of those, and they're still puddling up on the roof, and that was 12 hours after the rain stopped. So, definitely, the roof is number one getting replaced.
So, as people come in, it should be easier with all of the pictures of the problems and with that, the solution. So, we can have an artist's rendering of the roof all fixed, and before that, a picture of the flooded roof. People like visuals. What do you think, Scott?
Yeah. Yeah, I, my personal opinion, I don't think you're gonna get a whole lot of people coming to it.
Now, we also have scheduled on October 18th, the, they call it the media tour. So, it's where we're gonna have, we've invited the Democrat Times Herald Record River reporter to come up here so that, again, like the media tour, show them what we're gonna do, where the problems lie. So, that's on October 18th. I guess it's November, but October 18th.
So, our, our public hearing is October 19th, you said?
The public hearing is the 29th of September.
29th of September. So, do we want to meet, do we want to do the board meeting, the town board meetings in October?
I think that'd be a good idea.
Right after the public, right after the public hearing here?
Yep, I would.
All right, so let me, let me, all right, I'll get on that. I'll get on that.
And we'll have some better renderings by then too, which will help. So, we can show a picture, like, here's what we're doing.
That's kind of what I was getting at. We need to have everything ready. We need to know how much we're spending, you know, what we're financing, and what we're doing. So that when we go there, we have answers, and we have everything that we're doing. We don't look like, you know.
Yeah.
We need to make sure everything's, you know, we don't need to have somebody saying we're doing, we're gonna do 17 million when we plan on doing 50 million, as somebody was getting on an airplane at that time.
I don't know who you're talking about. And now we're down to third job.
You'll pay for that trip many times. It's a pleasure to help out in any way I can.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morgano.
Thank you.
See you later. You got any other report, Caleb?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, on buildings and grounds, for one, I just want to thank the cleaning and maintenance crew for the hard work in getting the buildings ready. This is my fifth summer, and I want to say this is probably the quickest, I think, I've ever seen the buildings together. But, more important right now on the buildings and grounds, we're exploring the possibility of an air pump heating and cooling system over at the elementary school. I received a quote from Schmitz Plumbing and Heating, or Schmitz Wholesale. It was $157,523.61. Now, we're looking into different kinds of financing for that. So, we got a little bit of money left over in one of the COVID grants, because I usually overbudget a little bit on each project. So, I'm looking at some of that. The state also gives you $100,000 per year for building projects. I did ask them, and they said that it could be done split, like we could do one wing, for, because it cannot go over $100,000. If it goes over $100,000, it's on our dime. He said he could split that in half. Jimmy is capable of installing it. And from what I'm told, it should lower our energy costs quite a bit, which is something I'm very interested in right now, because energy costs are like through the roof. And, so I'm thinking it's gonna be right around 157. I put on here 160 to 200, because there's always something that comes up. Part ends up being more, somebody's gotta come in and do something. But it's something we're looking at doing. Also, Nicerta, which is the energy, Scott Krebs looked into that. It's possible that that qualifies for 75% cost share. So, they might cover 75% of the cost to us. I'm in the preliminary part of just finding the financing for it. But if we find the financing for it, we plan to move ahead with it. And that'll replace air conditioning and possibly all of our heating. I'm not sure if it'll be able to handle the full heating load, but it should reduce the cost drastically. In the cafeteria, our community eligibility program application was accepted, and I wanted to thank Jill Decker for that too. She did a lot of legwork on that. She got the rosters all ready for it. She's the one that keeps track of all the percentages. So, both buildings will be full free, breakfast and lunch, fully approved. So, then that should be for the foreseeable future. In transportation, we received three of our new buses, but the other buses, so there's six long buses that should come at the end of this month, and six long buses that are coming at the end of next month. We did get to keep the other buses that we have, so it's not gonna be an issue for transportation. But they're like trickling in. They actually have one of the long buses ready, but each time they deliver a bus, they make me fill out a lease right then. And, you know, I called the guy, and I said, "I don't need us to have 15 different leases, so we're not gonna take one bus at a time. When you get six buses, deliver them, then you get the next six." So, we'll have, we'll technically have three separate leases. I thought 15 was a bit excessive. So, we do have a couple of the buses here ready. In the business office, the auditors were here this week. They'll have one more trip at the end of September. And then, we're, right now, we're still on track for completing the audit. We're also currently going, working on moving our systems over to an electronic based system. We purchased WinCap Web. They're getting that set up. Sometime in October, we'll train people on it. That's just so everybody gets their pay stubs, W2s, all that information will be in online system. And then, on, as the bond project, I already updated you guys on the bond project, so I think that would be kind of redundant. We're still on track for the December 6th vote, though. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Caleb. Any questions from the board? All good?
Very good.
Secondary principal.
All right, thank you, Mr. Halleck. I'm just happy I get to go before Mr. Carpenteri tonight, so, really appreciate that. Thank you. Well, although the junior, senior high school does need to work on our AOK awards, so if anybody's listening, we need to do some of those, please. Thank you. So, for my board report, 7th grade orientation was held on Thursday, August 25th. We covered a lot of useful information for students and parents. 7th graders were given a tour of the building by high school students. I want to thank the high school students for coming out and volunteering their time. 7th graders all said the opportunity to go to their locker, put their belongings in, as well as learn how to use the locks, which is always an adventure. I walked down there, and some were pretty frustrated with those locks. But I remember when I went to middle school too, that it was always a, you know, an adventure. So, and then on Tuesday, we welcomed 230 students into the building. It was nice to see all the students, even though it was raining, lots of rain. It was great to see everybody back in the building, and we had plenty of help for them to navigate the building on, you know, new students and our 7th graders on where they were going. So, opening day went well. Code of Conduct assemblies, I just, this is, I switched the date to Friday, so I'm doing the Code of Conduct assemblies tomorrow. Gonna be during certain periods of gym. So, I put Thursday, September 8th here. We didn't do them today. They will be done tomorrow, and all of our students will receive the code of conduct and sign the code of conduct receipt form. And I'm just gonna explain the rules and expectations to all the students. Homework hall and fitness center will begin on Wednesday, September 14th. The 8th grade Washington trip, information and registration meeting was last night. From what I understand, there was a pretty good turnout. So, the 8th grade, for that, they're gonna get going with fundraising and hopefully have a great trip. The junior, senior high school will be participating in a national center for rural education survey in the next week or so. And in addition, myself and Ms. Guerin will be participating in a conference in Ithaca on September 27th. The goal of Nicerta is to improve educational outcomes for all children, and then evidence must play a critical role. So, basically, what they're doing is our students are gonna take a survey, and it's gonna allow us to make, you know, more important decisions, guiding the, you know, instruction and the culture and climate of our buildings. So, we're looking forward to that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All good from the board? Very good. Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Halleck. It's an honor to go after the junior, senior high school principal. So, we also had a great first day. Opening day was wonderful, even with all the rain that occurred. It rained all day long, very hard, very intensely. The kids were, were not able to go outside, but we had 239 children walk through the doors of, I'm sorry, 236 children walk through the doors of Mackenzie. We did have three absences. So, our enrollment on the first day of school was 239 students. That is down 15 students from the end of last year at 254. However, we have two new students enrolled today, and we had another, we'll have another new student enrolled on Monday, and we do expect a couple of more to trickle in. So, we should be right around the 244, 245 range by the end of next week. Academic outcomes, we are implementing a new standard-based report cards, as well as trimesters this year at Mackenzie Elementary School. We got to see one of the first standard-based report cards today, a draft of it, which was wonderful. We expect all grade level report cards to be completed by October 1st, which gives teachers and staff plenty of time to input grades for parent teacher conferences in November, and then the first trimester ending in the first week of December. Parents have been informed of the change. They will continue to receive information from myself, both in the form of open house, in person, as well as in writing. This will be a big discussion in open house for me to explain to parents as we move toward this standard-based report card. We're implementing really great reading in the elementary school. Professional development for it is ongoing. This is here to improve phonetic awareness among students in grades pre-K through 5th grade. Our biggest gap right now are our students in 3rd through 5th grade. Those students were affected the most by the pandemic. Unfortunately, those students, and when they were in 1st and 2nd grade, not receiving that reading instruction has really hindered them as they've moved into the intermediate. that reading instruction has really hindered them as they've moved into the intermediate grades of the elementary school. State testing, we just received the ability to look at our state test scores from last year, both in ELA, science and math. And I've begun analyzing those scores so we can identify gaps and as well as drive instruction. We expect to have fall enrichment clubs after Columbus Day through Thanksgiving break. The Odyssey of the Mind will run their screening here in September. Student council will be elected on election day on November 8th. And we are looking to add Special Olympics for Eldred Central School District's students to qualify. And to piggyback off of what Caleb said earlier, the buildings and grounds this summer, the personnel did a phenomenal job in our buildings. In my building, we did have summer school, which does really hinder what we can get done. But they really worked with not only the teachers and the students in the building to make it work. The communication was great. And the other big piece here is the ability to do some of our own work in our school has severely driven down the cost of the bond and what we expect to spend. So taking down the wall and the maker space, creating more space in the library, that was done by two of our guys all summer. And that's, it looks great and it allows us to really put more into the bond as we can pay for it ourselves here. The biggest thing with building the grounds is also our magnetic locks to be installed on common area doors. So those doors will close automatically even if someone's not in the room or in a common area when there is a lockdown. Alright? And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you, sir. Director of Instructional Support Report, Scott, you're up.
Alright, thank you, Scott. It's an honor to go after the junior senior high school principal and the elementary principal down here. So anyway, we are participating in a state initiative where we'll have data access to FAFSA information, not the specific information of students, but that they had completed their FAFSA information that they do when going off to college. So one of the things that the state has found out is that sometimes there's a lack of communication between the district and, and parents and students if they had completed it. And then we find out they're lacking it. So there's an initiative to allow us to at least see who has done their FAFSA paperwork. Also tonight, I think somewhere on here, you're going to approve the school comprehensive education plan. And we submitted that to the state and upcoming next month will be the district education plan. The elementary school has started our Really Great Reading Program. We're implementing that for our pre-Kers through 5th grade. And Read 180 will be for a tier three intervention for 3rd through 12th grade. The Really Great Reading focuses on phonics and phonemic awareness mainly at the pre-K through 2nd grade level. The 3rd, 4th and 5th are going to participate this year if they have, as Mr. Carpenteri said, have some lacking of skills because of their pandemic at home and, and some of those chopped up educational efforts that we have provided. So that's an implementation at the elementary level. And lastly, we have a online coursework program for students for credit recovery or for accelerated coursework called Edgenuity. We have two students that are signed up for that today. And what that allows them to do, that if they have coursework that they can't complete within this course of a school day here with us at the junior senior high school, they can do an online course and hopefully make up that correct class that they couldn't get in and either graduate on time or for students that need or wish accelerated coursework, we have an opportunity for them to do that. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Yes.
Scott?
The, the credit recovery program, is there a grade level that we're looking at? Is that 7 through 12? Or what's the eligibility that the student has to meet in order to qualify for that program?
I think it came from the high school principal. And what they are looking at is those specifics that I talked about. If a child has a full schedule and they need a class that they can't get because of that, they can do that as part of credit recovery. Or we had, I think a couple of kids, and Tracy can correct me if I'm wrong, that might have wanted accelerated courses and we don't offer them here. So they can do them online. And there's a teacher of record, so somebody here in our school building will actually get information back from the online coursework of how the students are progressing.
Okay.
So it's a really good opportunity for them that we couldn't regularly provide. And, you know, we're hoping that some will graduate on time because of that.
And that's, and that's why we are targeting the seniors to ensure that they graduate with their cohort.
Gotcha.
Yes. And I was going to add that it is 11th and 12th graders right now that we're targeting.
Okay.
So, and we're not talking about a lot. It's a handful, but we are able to give them that opportunity.
Thank you.
Anything else?
All good?
Okay.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have much. I was here last Thursday and it was nice to see everybody back. I mean, I guess, I think from the first time I came here four years ago to the, to the other day, I think the morale level's a little bit better, I would say. I think we're in a better way now than where we were when Dr. Morgano and myself decided to take over. But it was nice to see everybody smiling and I think we're in a good way. We've got a strong administration. We have a strong board and we're definitely moving in the right direction.
Alright.
What's that?
I'd like to add something, if I may. You have an outstanding principal there in your high school and outstanding principal in the elementary. The superintendent of this school and this raising the next superintendent is a great strategy. Remember when we hired Tracy? We thought that that would be her future. And she's doing an outstanding job. People, people call me and tell me.
Absolutely. We hired, we hired three principals in two years. Right?
Yeah.
And then you moved up to superintendent. And we got these two fine gentlemen down here. So in two years, we hired three principals and superintendent and we kept him on for the bond. So we're all one big happy family still.
Yeah.
Alright, at this point I'll take public comment on the consent agenda items only. These three women have any questions? Alright, moving on. 801, I'll take a motion to approve consent items 4.01 through 7.04. I need a motion. I need a second. Okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda items? Have we all had a chance to look at it? Everybody good with it? I'll take a vote.